So we were talking about Jackie, um, the other day, uh, we, I don't know how we got the subject in. So we said, we need somebody from Carbon County to do leadership Wyoming this year. I said, somebody? Yeah, someone from Carbon County too who leads their Wyoming. I think it was, it was this weekend.
This who?
Who was I talking to? We were talking about leadership Carbon County and then started talking about leadership Wyoming and they're like, we need somebody this year. And I said, we have somebody this year.
Thanks for sticking up for me. She's pretty awesome.
She is pretty awesome. She's enjoying the program.
I am. It's fun. Cool, some of the connections you make too.
I know, like, yeah, like on Friday on Border Wars. And the Border Wars game. So Derby doesn't really want us to stay at her apartment, her house with five girls because it's Border Wars Cowboys CSU game, like kinda wild. She's, doesn't want to put, impede on her roommates having fun that night. So I'm like, where the heck are the games at six o'clock? So, and, you know, three hundred and forty-five dollars a night for a hotel room, two nights required, you know? And I'm like, holy crap. So I'm like texting my leadership group, who has a bed that I can sleep in? And so then one of Greg from Gillette from Visionary says, Zo, my daughter has an extra room in her apartment. And I'm like, oh, but I'm not doing it to my daughter. Why do I go to his daughter? And then Zo texts me and goes, oh, no, that's fine. I like having my dad's friends.
She's going after your daughter.
That would've been the last thing I would've done.
I like having my dad's friends. And I'm like, oh, do I feel really old all the time? Fifty-nine and feeling old. Yeah, but we are. I mean, yeah, something else, like somebody was sending a text, oh, they wanted to trans- transport a dog. And everybody's like on the groups.
Yeah. Are you on the, the same app, the WhatsApp or whatever?
Yeah.
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 Sometimes it's like, it's overwhelming. So I'll have this whole, like, and you're like, I don't have time for notifications.
I know, I know. Well, and then
Too busy.
We ended up creating our own WhatsApp. We put alum twenty twenty-three because then we were like, nothing against Mandy or Toby.
Yeah, you don't need them on.
We don't want them on our WhatsApp app, what we do now. But every once in a while, somebody will post on the wrong one.
Oh, yeah.
And they'll like, so then we have class of twenty twenty-three and alum of twenty, anyway. Yeah, but it is a little overwhelming.
Yeah, sometimes I'm like, this is just too much for me.
And then you get everybody's pictures and I'm like.
Uh-huh. Especially game day. They're all at the game and you're like, I'm at the, I'm at a Rollins Middle School football game.
Did you post your picture being at the Rollins Middle School?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But we're undefeated, just saying.
Yeah, they, yeah, after C, after Air Force. Oh, what kind of play call? What kind of call? Oh. I was, I left the room, was in the kitchen, and all of a sudden I hear some words come out of my daughter's mouth and I scream, Derby, watch your mouth! Mom, they were being stupid!
It was warranted.
I figured Tom was thinking the same thing.
It was warranted.
I was trying to follow the game, but it was tough.
Yeah.
When you're at a different game and trying to follow a game, it just don't work.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And that was a good game to be at, the one I was at.
You went to the Air Force game?
No, I went to Oregon State, UCLA.
Where was that?
It was in, no, Corvallis.
It's where my son lives. I didn't know you went there.
Yeah.
Sorry I'm late.
It was a good game too, really good.
Well, and I bet you the weather was great.
It was like, I don't know, a little spunky, you know, a little
A little rainy?
Yeah. It was, but, but it was
Twenty-four hours a day.
It was nice. I mean, it wasn't, getting out of here was not nice, you know? We got stuck on the interstate that night for like three hours. To Denver.
Alrighty, sorry I'm late. Usually takes me four and a half minutes to get here. Today it took me six.
Traffic?
Walkers.
Oh, I know you're old and, but I didn't know you were that old. That you needed a walker.
I'm moving over to the square.
Hey, Chris, that's your elders.
Elders. I get it.
What's your wife's phone number, boyfriend's phone number? You're gonna be late getting home.
I might have to use a walker.
Yeah, Tennessee walker, you have to ride a horse.
Oh my gosh.
Alright. I'll call this workshop to order at six oh three and I'll turn the floor to you Pam.
What is this?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. So this is a long time coming. I, you know, simple projects just must not be in my backpack. Um, so the downtown light project was, um, a project that we started in two thousand and twelve, so eleven years ago. The mission and goal of this project was to create even more, um, increased lighting for safety, um, which always, um, more lighting is, makes people feel safer in any community, any downtown. But it also statistics show that they spend more money when they feel safer. And so this project, um, when it came to fruition in two thousand and twelve through a volunteer group, like a lot of projects come to us, um, we always come up with a mission and a goal. So the mission and goal of the downtown light project was for safety and economic vitality of the district and downtown and increasing sales tax for the city of Rollins. So I'm gonna, you have the backstory and you guys have this in your packet. I'm just gonna give some quick highlights. Um, two thousand and twelve was the first, um, year that we brought this to council to look at the project, um, and then started fundraising at the Passion and Pride Ball. It was a solar package that would go on tops of the buildings. And so there was a lot of things, um, first of all, we extensively met with the city attorney then and came to the conclusion that we would create an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the property owners to place, um, the solar panels, they were about three foot by three foot on the tops of the buildings and, um, that's how we would get the power for this project. We also then did not have a solar ordinance in the city, so DDA had to write a solar ordinance. We worked with the town of Evanston, a lot of hoops, lots of things that went through, um, that staff was doing, but at the same time, the volunteers were fundraising, so we fundraised for two years, two thousand and twelve, excuse me, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. Um, everything was approved, planning a zoning through city council and go forth and, and do the project. So then in two thousand and thirteen, we were awarded the first chunk of money for the facade easement project. And we had long conversations saying, we're not gonna know what's exactly gonna happen on the fronts of the buildings, the tops of the buildings. And so maybe we should pause to be fiduciary responsible because why didn't we want to install lights on buildings and then pull them down so they wouldn't get broken and then put them back up? So there was a decision made, came to the council, let them know that this project was gonna be on hold dur- during the duration of the facade. Now, we thought it was gonna be two to three years. It ended up being four years because of the facade project, because it was so unique. Um, took about a year and a half longer than we expected because of not ever being tried before. So finished facade, we're back in two thousand and eighteen, we're starting to get going again. We now have a new city attorney who was not, does not want an MOU. They now want an easement. Which, her, in her right, absolut- in their right, absolutely. Um, we talked it through multiple meetings, back and forth, back and forth with our, um, councilperson, um, for the DDA. I remember Eddie, Eddie Archileta and I spent hours up in the attorney's office, just why. So we went through that, came to the decision that an easement was needed. So then we went back out to the property owners and the property owners had just gone through easements and said, we're not really that interested in doing another easement. And this would be a perpetual easement and not have an end date. And on top of that, the company that we were gonna use for the solar panels and the lights went out of business. So now we have like eighty-six thousand dollars sitting in the account, multiple. I mean, it was too passionate pride, but you think about we had, we couldn't just give the money back because it was like companies, but individuals and, 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 and we took a poll and people wanted to continue. So two thousand and nineteen, we came up with a new idea, um, to actually use the power out of the light, the black decorative light poles. So then, and run power, like maybe per block, maybe pull it out of the decorative light poles, cut the sidewalk, run up the sides of the building, and that was seeming to get some momentum. Um, we found enough people on each block that since they only were gonna have conduit, kind of covered conduit in seams of the buildings, enough people that they were okay with that. And so we were getting ready to move forward, one or two power sources per block, MOUs only, they were okay with that. Um, and so by the time we got through all of that, getting where the easements ready, getting cuts on the sidewalk, finding a contractor for that, plus electrician, we thought, good, we're ready to install summer of twenty twenty. Dun 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 dun. So then, everything hit. Um, the conduit now, running in the sidewalk, up the sides of the building, blew our budget by about four, over forty thousand dollars. Didn't have a fundraising event this year because we're like, okay, how can we raise? So you guys can read, so we just in two thousand and twenty, just kind of halted again. Um, and then came back strong in two thousand and twenty-one and, um, continued to work with contractors for ideas because we hadn't fundraised. So we're still short over forty thousand dollars. We had a new idea from electric, from the electrician to actually plug in, instead of cutting in the sidewalk, we were trying to cut, cut costs, is why don't we do out, external plugins on the top. So one to two of the property owners that had agreed, um, to use conduit on the side and one or two people on the tops of their buildings. Um, then they're like, we would actually install outdoor plugins. By the, by the time we got through all that, a lot of the property owners said, you know what? We're not sure. It just, it just kind of kept like, like, we don't know if we want them on the tops of our buildings anymore. It, it just, we kept working into challenges. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we finally had a fundraiser. Um, but again, we had probably the people, we had enough people that said, we don't want them on the tops of the buildings that we had to take a hard look. So how do you get that look we want? So can you go to the next picture, Myra? So how could, well, no, go ahead. How could you go and get this look? This is actually a picture when we had the, um,
National tree?
Yep, the national Christmas tree. So this is what we had shown in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, what the plan was. But now we finally said, okay, we're moving forward. We've got an idea for power. We have enough money in the, in the budget now, or still working on funding, but how could we go halfway down the block, then someone would stop because they didn't want it on their building, and then start again, and then the block maybe, it, it just, we had too many people, like as we sort of laying it out, from a, from a aesthetic standpoint, it wasn't doing what we wanted. Like stop, start, stop, start, stop, start. So in tw- in two thousand and twenty-three, we went back again and said, okay, maybe we can use the light poles and go off those and string the lights. We're bringing them down lower, but we're still getting to safety, we're still meeting, meeting the mission, uh, the goal, and we're increasing the footprint, actually doing more lights now. We don't have to have an MOU with the property owners. And so we started talking to all the committees, going out to the public, saying, what would you, if you guys, if we would put them on the light poles and string them on light poles, still would give us that light, that like runway effect from I eighty, what's going on in Rollins and everything. So that's where we're at today. So that is the long story short of this eleven-year-old project that we just still have money for and we wanna do. So what we had worked with a contractor pretty exclusively, I don't lie to me, just to get some pricing and some ideas, um, we came up with the idea of doing the light poles. So you'll see in the packet, um, that we have four phases. Um, again, meeting our mission, still paying for it with the money we raised last year from Passion of Pride. So Myra, the next one would be phase one, which we would cover all the light poles, a hundred and eleven of them, in the downtown, and we have this up right now. Um, if you guys leave tonight, you can go down there if you've already seen it. We would wrap the light poles with four lights. What's super cool is one of the things from the very beginning in this project is some of our larger funders said, it'd be really cool if we could change the colors of these. And I'm like, okay, they don't make them. Back in two thousand and twelve, we couldn't do them.
Now they do.
What's really cool on this is we can do this now because of technology. So Myra's gonna show you a video that I took this morning about six AM. Should've done it last time when I left our board meeting. But this is a true example of what we can do in this first phase. Um,
Oh, it's not. Why is it not showing? Ah, it's showing on my screen.
Turn your computer around so we can see it. Let's see.
Technology.
Pause that. There we go. Okay, so this is this morning. Um, these are Halloween colors. So it's a little remote control. I can walk around to every different one of them. Oh, you can see the lights in the park and everything. But this is the purples and the oranges. So then I walk, then I started walking because you have to get close, but you can change every single pole a different color. Now I've moved it to candy canes. So now it's red and white.
Nice.
And so then I'm just kind of showing you guys here of the candy cane opportunity. And again, I was standing in the middle of the street flipping these. Um, and it was just doing it all at once. Little connect, if you're not right. Now I did it when it switched to Christmas. Yeah.
It was cool.
Yeah. And so Myra, you just move a little forward. So then, oh, there's, there's a wave. We can do a wave. That one has candy cane and that one's Christmas. Okay? So then I thought, well, we can have Outland Day. We can do red and white. We can do, so you'll see that's green again. Um, and you'll see I took it to colored. There's a Halloween setting, there's a Valentine setting, there's a candy cane, that's strobing. There's like six different settings we can change, but then we're back to Christmas because I didn't change that one. And then the last thing is I turn, I changed this one to just green. And then I turned another one to red. So it gives up. I think the other, yeah. So it's really cool because we can actually go through and do something that we really wanted to do in two thousand and twelve and weren't able to. Oh, there's the green ones. So it'll be fun to do, you know, green and white for St. Patrick's Day or whatever. And it's all on a slip. I can stand as a group, we can set them. They will have timers on them so they won't be on all the time. It's just a really neat program.
Are they like Christmas lights?
Uh-huh. These are, these are just like tiny, there's four strands.
How come now what is, if you go back? Right there, how come it's blank?
Uh, because that strand is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's a good question. I wanted to know. I called the, so we had, these are our test sites that he gave us so we could show you guys what they would actually look like. So if we go then to our first map, which is phase one again.
Can, can I ask one question Pam?
Yeah.
Like, um, when it's really dark out and, and let's say they're white, how far from that pole does it light up? I can't really tell by these pictures. I'm just curious.
It's, it's
The distance, if, the ones in the park, um, the X that's in the park, lights that whole, that right there, that lights that whole area. Those lights don't even have to be on.
Yeah, that one, but I'm talking about these poles.
Go back to the poles.
So they, they reach out probably fifteen feet
Both directions.
From the side out. So it's about a thirty-foot wrap on the thing.
I just was curious.
So you don't have a very
Because we want that. That's one of the reasons we want that. Yeah.
And depending on the color, it's gonna be brighter or darker.
Right, right.
So the light poles on the lights on the top, will those still be on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So these right here, for, I don't know why they're not wired this way, but the, the plugs on these lights are on continuously. The lights themselves are not. They're on a timer. Not a timer, but a photo cell. It tells them to come on and go off. But the power doesn't do that. So in the bid that we have, these will all have timers on them, so they go off, off, and then come back on again. So they won't be on all the time.
On the ones that's X-ing, that's the ones you were going to, you wanted to put on top of the buildings, right?
Yes, but we're still gonna use those.
Okay, so how heavy are they?
They're not.
They're not. So
My concern is
So this is it. And this is the wire. And can we, so let's, let's go to phase two, because that's in phase two. So Myra, go back to phase one of the map, the map. So this is what we're saying. We're gonna start with phase one. They can get us in and we can have this done by the holidays.
So my concern though, I mean, and it, maybe you guys have probably asked this, but those aren't like structural poles. They're more of a design pole. So my concern is you're putting weight and with the wind that we have that could sway those, what kind of damage, yes, what kind of damage could we look at that?
We're not, we'll, we'll tell you exactly what's gonna happen.
Good.
Okay. So, Myra went back. Okay, so that's by December, or no, he's gonna do it November. That's the plan. So then we go to phase two, which is summer. And this is where we have to structurally hire the engineer to make sure we're good. So summer of twenty-four, we then will actually add the plastic Edison bulbs. We will run a wire. Now, if you go down to downtown right now, they'll, they make an X and then they'll make, they, they make a square and an X. He did not do in the test, the square in addition to the X, because he did not want to put that extra weight. So what we have come up with is, we cannot just line the streets from pole to pole to pole everywhere because we would have to actually put something that would hold it. So to answer your question, we've already got with that.
Okay.
So what we're, our plan is, Myra, if you go back, is this is phase two, is we would then take the cross and that square and put them in six corners, six intersections. And then we would do two ways, um, across the kind of make, like you've come into the downtown and those kind of like strips, like you're looking at I eighty and you're looking at the lines. So what will happen is we will install four by four or five by five, depending what the engineer, we have that on the budget. So if you look at most, some, all the corners have at least one of these poles because of the weight finding. So we're gonna mimic those weight finding poles, which are four by fours or five by fives, steel, and put those in the ground and then hook those up, much like Seventeenth Street in Cheyenne did, for their lights. So we are not using the light poles for the intersections. So when you look at downtown, by the end of summer, we will have all the light poles lit up and then we will have the two ways on the intersections, like this, just the paint strips right there, Myra, yep. And then we will have the Xs.
So you're saying you're gonna string them across the intersections?
Yep.
So with that, what's the height that you're gonna be?
Seventeen feet.
And we're gonna put
That's a requirement, but for a bridge in YDOT. Already checked that out, but we're gonna go to eighteen feet.
And then you're just gonna have to, you shouldn't ever have to worry about eighteen foot, someone getting on it, but, you know, or under it, you know?
We're under it because, because YDOT's requirement of any bridge is seventeen feet.
I was just curious if we have to post height requirements.
We don't, and we're working with YDOT already.
Sweet.
Yeah, so the ones, if we go back to the video, or that, no, it's right there. So how long have those been up? Just curious.
A week, two weeks? Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Okay. So we get forty to sixty mile an hour winds. What is it gonna do to those?
This isn't on there. Those are just wrapped right on the poles. This will actually be
No, I mean, the light, the lights that are on that pole, those are like, those are glass, correct?
No.
No.
There's no glass in any of them.
There's no glass in anything.
Okay, so those are plastic lights, bulbs?
Yeah.
So what stand are hitting?
Yeah.
If they're not moving, if you go up there, you can't even barely get a finger underneath.
I asked the same thing to Steve, I, because I said, uh, I have a concern of with how people act and foolishness. Well, he said they're industrial.
It blows everything around, everything that I
They haven't moved at all.
But you can take an LED, because that's what's in all my signs, a lot of them.
Yes.
And you can take a three-foot string of them, hook them to the power supply and beat it on the bench and they're fine. I'm not kidding you.
And that's, and that's, I should've said, everything's LED. Everything's plastic and everything's LED.
And are they, most LEDs come with like a fifty thousand hour light, uh, life expectancy? Like I noticed that one was out. What will be the warranty on these?
They'll be, they'll have a full warranty on it.
For
Up to fifty thousand. We'll track our hours.
For the hours, not, not years or days. Oh.
And then also I wanted to show you, there's, there's two different ones. One, if you look at Bistro lights that are not, that are not sold commercially, they actually hang down and then they have the bolt. We won't pick those. These are actually right up here. So like, a lot of them you buy over the counter have like a, what, a three-inch drop and then the light. There's no way. And then we also did decide to go with the more Edison look over this one.
Oh, that.
Yeah. So again, we'll, so we'll have So again, we'll, so we'll have all the streetlights on. And then we'll have all the intersections and then we'll have the two ways. Those will be signed off by an engineer on the size, the, if it's a quarter inch. You know, we're using, we're gauging the wave finding signage, you know, and those have, you know, the light. So we're working with, we, we went back to whammy signs and checked with them on what they used, just so we knew because we want to match it. We're not going to use them. We actually have found a manufacturer that's really inexpensive. Well, not inexpensive, but you know, when you're putting in poles on all those sections to match. I'm not going to spend four thousand dollars when I could spend six hundred and get a St. Patrick's. But they'll be power coated. They'll just look like everything that's already installed in the city. It'll just really complement it. I'm really want to make sure we're not giving sign clutter, pole clutter, any of those things. So this is the plan. So pink will go up right away because, I mean, easier because we already have electric. And then two B will take a little later because we'll have to install the poles. But then I talked to them, we don't have any, um, the green ones, the two green Xs. Because we don't have any light poles.
There's no light.
But what will happen is we have electric in the, in the sidewalk. And if you guys have ever looked at, a lot of times I've been in sidewalks in the last ten years, is we have those boxes every so often.
They look like sprinkler boxes.
Yes, exactly, sure. Yeah. So this is the plan. So again, this is a hundred and eleven light poles and six intersections. So then the next one, Myra, so again, this is what it will look like. And this is what, this, this is connected to light poles. This is not, but it was the best thing to show you. That's going to be the single on poles, on eighteen foot poles. So when you come into Buffalo from Third Street, you'll like enter into the section. It's much like if anybody's been to Laramie Square in Denver or Seventeenth Street in, um. Cheyenne. Summer of twenty twenty five. So there is a lot of, um, wires crossing streets in this town. Spent the last two weeks driving around saying, that can't be eighteen feet. That's about ten feet. That's about.
Yeah.
Um, what we, and again, Jake already sent an email and started conversations with YDOT. We would like to go ahead and see if we can go on Third Street. This is a big hope. But if, if we meet the requirements of eighteen feet, I mean, if you go right across Bank of Commerce or across the clinic, Memorial. Hospital put in front of the Hardman Building, if you look up when you're driving up going home, there's big old lines crossing that. You know, I mean, it's not like it's not been done. So we really would like to, but we want to prove that in next summer of twenty twenty four. That this is viable. It's doing amazing things. And so our plan would be to add, um, the two blue Xs. The bottom blue across on, um, Front Street. We're not sure about that one that Myra saw on Third because we do have the big, I have it in my estimations and cost and workflow and everything. But we, they may say no to that because we have the metal sign at Third and Cedar, you know, um, have all the streetlights. The streetlights. Is that right? Yeah. So we may not be able to do that one, but we'd really like, again, for that aesthetic when someone's driving along I eighty and they're looking. As they're going by, they're like, holy smokes, what are the, what, what, what's going on in Rollins, Wyoming again? Aesthetically, safety and economic.
Safety, I mean, uh, this is really exciting to me because there's nothing like turning on the lights.
We're, we're open for business.
Yes.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I love Brian from Tough Guys and he's been awesome to work with the last year and a half. He's held out on this project. Measured every building, given me an estimate before they said, the property owner said no. He's come back and done the lights. I mean, he's really, he sends me a video. Two weeks ago, after I pretty much run the budget and says, oh, you know, by the way, the RGB where we can change all the light poles? They have it now on these.
Yeah, they do.
But, oh, the price, I don't know. We'll see, we'll see. But Nate, when we started this, they didn't have. The colored remote controls on these bad boys for the intersections. So this is where we're at, summer of twenty twenty five. Um, hoping that we, we have a great working relationship with YDOT and, you know, we're following all the rules and the YDOT rules. They might say, yeah, but I just wanted you guys to know that that's what, again, I put it right on there, Claire's Day YDOT. Depending. We would like it. We have the funds to do it. Maybe they say no.
Pam, what, and I get people's minds change and everything else, but what is the cause of everybody in a grants? And then all of a sudden, is it different property owners nowadays and stuff like that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you figure we started this project eleven years ago. We've had a lot of property owner changes. And then I really do feel like when the city attorney changed and said she wanted an easement. MOU doesn't change with the property. It's with that property owner. But if we did an easement, it went with the property.
Yeah.
Okay. So when that transpired, I just think people felt, and I think they said the word perpetual. And it's one thing when they said facade and it's over in two thousand and twenty five. So we're almost, I mean, we're almost ready to, I mean, that's one thing, but to say we're putting a perpetual easement on your property. I think it scared them.
Easements don't have to, and I don't think this would, but they can affect property values. And to sell it, you have to find somebody that's willing to pay for it and everything else. And accept an extra easement and then one more hurdle might.
So have we thought about, since we current have different city attorneys, have we thought about seeing what their thoughts are on an MOU instead of an easement?
I think it's not even the easement anymore. I think, because we fought down to back to an MOU if we did the power up the side. It was that there were enough property owners that even if there wasn't easement, they didn't want lights hanging on their buildings. And then we wouldn't have that consistent, that consistent.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we finally, I mean, don't get me wrong, I guess, these projects can take years.
I like it.
I keep supporting these projects, but it gets to a point where you're kind of saying, okay.
No, I get, I was just saying too, it's not like it's a done deal. You could X these and everything else on the intersections. It'll look good. But you know, you're going to put in these eighteen foot poles. That's not saying that we cannot later go back. And put these same engineered poles in and string lights down the streets.
Well, it's interesting you say that because we are thinking sustainable down the road. All of a sudden we have these eighteen and we only have to be seventeen feet. Most acquired semis are fourteen feet, six inches.
That's state law.
State law, that's state law. Fourteen feet is state law for vehicles, okay? Well, we're going to eighteen feet. We could take two foot welcome to Rollins. Little League baseball. I mean, we're going to have these poles up now. Imagine what we can do to promote this town. I mean volleyball, the baseball, I mean, there's, so we're going to make these poles multifunctional. So yes, so all of a sudden, you're absolutely right. We have it there. We could, let's look at, Myra, can you go like, so if we're on, if I'm on Cedar Street. Right, right there between Fourth and Fifth, maybe if they're strung up, we drop another pole like you said, Chris, right in the middle of the block. And all of a sudden, we're crisscrossing down because we put them in, we've met the requirements, we've been above the requirements. I mean, there's, I mean, we've opened.
You got lots of options, especially something already engineered and designed like that.
Exactly. And stamped by an engineer.
Yeah, you pay once and you got a lifetime of use of it, you know, in that aspect of things.
We're excited about that, for that opportunity. So then this is my phase four, summer of twenty twenty six. So I wasn't here when they redid the streets, the sidewalks in Rollins, and they put in the decorative light poles. But they didn't put any decorative light poles on Fourth Street.
I don't get it.
So we really want that whole look, but I think the, the intersection light ups are going to do a lot. We do not in funding, have money to put in the black decorative light poles, um, at this point. However, how technology is changing, we probably could get decorative light poles solar, which would save a lot of money. Um, but this would be, I mean, again, I think the volunteers, DDA, the DDA board really want to see a project. That pays for itself, is down the road, is sustainable. And so the goal would be for this whole downtown light project. You know, now you just gave me a five, phase five, Chris, because then if we want to go crisscrossing down or whatever. But that we would like to figure out whether it's impact assistance or another fundraising or grant or whatever. To put, in the end, put in the lights on Fourth Street. But that is not in the funding that we have. I just wanted to show you that we're already thinking ahead.
It's weird that they just skipped that whole street.
That whole street, uh, it is weird.
That's because state paid for all of that when they took out the medium down through town. There used to be medium all the way down through town. When they took that out and redone all the street, that was part of it that. They replaced the lights back in, but they took medium out and they just replaced them on the streets where the medium was. State did it. City did it. That's why they're going in through it.
Cause they put the lights on on Spruce and Third when they redid it this last time. Yeah, it's just.
It, it was state funded, all of it.
With the black light poles? Okay, so that's good to know.
Yeah.
Um, I know that it gets really dark when you walk out of the Jeffrey Center. It's really dark up on, on Fourth and Pine. We've had a lot of parents talk to us about getting their kids from the daycare right there. Um, it's not lit well. And so we know with that intersection, with the green X right there, I mean, because it lights up a lot. That's going to be a whole, and so we're going to get that effect because we're going to have done the, the pink across the bottom in front of the depot. We're going to do the X. So I mean, we're going to get that effect. So again, that's something we'll have to think about, um, as a city and, and as a downtown. But again, I just wanted you guys to know, we're thinking about that. Then I can put phase five, a new idea. But I mean, so, so that's kind of how it falls out. Um, so let's talk numbers because I always don't like to do projects if I don't know where money's coming from. So, um, we have the cost of the lights and the installation. You do see the LED five millimeter Honda XRGB lights for the hundred, it's a hundred and eleven, sorry. We have about seventy thousand allocated for that and then the bistro lights for the corners and the intersections. And that includes the wire, um, also. And then you see the poles for the corners. Um, there's about fifty poles that would be installed through all phases. Okay. And then the installation. Engineering, I call our fund engineer that we use, whether it's installing the hawks in the corners or going six feet deep or whatever. Um, and so we have an engineer that we've used over the years and I, I'd have told him when I needed and he's like. Eh, probably around, I'd probably charge you about forty five hundred, yeah. But it's seventy five hundred because I always like to make sure we have that money. And then if we need the additional electrical installations on the corners of Fourth and Pine. And Fourth and Buffalo, we're going to have to get some power to those corners. Worked with electrician on that. That's high again, but I'd rather be safe than sorry. And then operation and maintenance because we never like to do a project that we can't take care of. Um, we've also, just to let you guys know, um, so it is about a dollar a day to light up.
That's what I was going to ask.
All of these for twelve hours, a dollar. And then when we get to. This case, which is pretty much the full phase one, two and three, that adds another two dollars for twelve, and that's twelve hours. But if we have timers, we're not going to run them, but we average twelve hours. So you're talking three dollars a day. So we're talking about a thousand dollars a year. And so we do have the first four years saved already for, um, and then. We also then sat down with some of our sponsors and said, we have a gems of downtown. And you have to, some things to do with electric and power and. Would you be interested in fifteen hundred dollars a year? Having your gems go to that, which would cover the thousand dollars and start money for extra five hundred. Every year to start for replacement or damages. So we already have four thousand in the budget, plus we've already had conversations with the sponsor saying. And they may come back. So what we're going to do, we talked to the, the board, had a great board meeting last night, is this is going to be our chance for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two, passion for sweet saree. Is to be able on these, on these power coded things is thank you, City of Rollins. Thank you, H S Sinclair. We'll be able to use those poles and as a, as a thank you. And then also put something on every one of them that says powered up by. And that sponsor who gives us the money every year. On top of that, I always put contingency in my projects, um, and I'm really tight on budgets. So I have, I have the five percent contingency. I don't have extra sixty two hundred dollars. Bring us a total of about a hundred and thirty thousand for the project. This is four through phase three, one, two, two B and three. And then you can see where the income has come from, fundraising of twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. And then this past year's gems of the downtown was forty five thousand. So we have a hundred and thirty thousand.
I can't believe you can get it done for that.
I know.
I mean, that just sounds like for that much money, what an incredible improvement that will be.
Yeah.
I'm impressed.
I, you know what I'm impressed about? Pam just said funded depreciation without even saying it. And I, I know I'm serious because, you know, she's already planning the future of replacements and stuff like that and.
Tells me she's been watching our meetings.
So, so no, I mean, it's, it's a great deal, right, that, that you're pushing that forward too? Because it makes it easier for decisions to be made and, and knowing that the upkeep's going to make, be maintained. Cause I've said it multiple times, Rollins is great at building things, horrible at maintaining it, right?
Well, I, I think that's, I'm very pleased and very proud of my board of directors, our volunteers, our funders, our sponsors. We've put a project together, whether, whether it's the Rainbow T-Top, the hub, or the splash pad, or whatever, or the parklets or whatever. We've always put O and M, always, as a depreciation. Um, because we want to, you know, I mean, people walk in and they go into the hub and they immediately always say. Why, this is a brand new building. I'm like, oh no, it was, it was done in two thousand and eleven.
Did you say it before?
But you know, I think that's important. We, you know, we, we can, yeah, we can build all we want. But then we have to maintain it. And so, you know, I'm super excited. It does seem, it's just kind of like, it was a conversation I had with somebody today about the splash pad. You know, that first bid we opened was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm like, no, we're going to go back, start with pencils. And we're going to get this darn thing done. It may have taken us longer. Took us longer than we thought, um, had a few things, you know, happen and, and good things, like we got the facade and, you know, everything, then, then other things. But you know, we have to be fiduciarily responsible. And you know, I think the board, every board I've had has, has been that way. That we have to be able to take care of the things we build. And so I guess we, because originally in two thousand twelve, the city council said, yes, go forward and prosper, do this great project. It's going to do exactly what you want. But it was with solar. And so, you know, no, there wasn't going to be any expenses paid. Again, now we're coming back and saying, we're plugging into city light poles. And whether it's a thousand dollars a year, which in. Twelve million dollar budget, still a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars. I mean, that's not, what is that? Two percent, one percent? Not even that, not even that. I mean, but it's still money. And so we, when we started this project.
It's one month's payment on a billboard on the highway.
There we go.
Look at the difference.
Oh my gosh.
That's what it is.
And Terry, you're absolutely right. The first three years in DDA, we paid that for billboards.
I, I used to own two right by the krauts, remember?
Oh, yeah.
And I remember the first time their lease came up, they wrote me and said, we're going to send you a check for twelve hundred dollars for. This billboard for the next year. And I said, no, you're not. You're going to build two, or the other company will. And, uh, you're going to pay me twelve hundred dollars a month. And for each one. They said, no, we're not. And the other company did. That simple.
I just had a great, Myra, go back to one of these. Could you imagine, hey, we're looking at Fifth Street because now all of a sudden, this is one huge billboard. If we could somehow take up Fifth Street and get something at the end for the prison. Like, you know, I, I mean, that would be cool. But I mean, just think people are going to go. Hi, whichever direction they're going to come, this is way more, it's a thousand dollars a year, not a thousand dollars a month for a billboard. That's a great way to look at it.
Well, that's, that's exactly what it is.
Huh. And that was the whole point is what are we going to get from I eighty? It's the lowest hanging fruit we have. We are not using an. We are not using enough.
Can I tell you a funny story about lighting?
Sure. I've eaten chicken and sleep and lighting for eleven years.
Well.
And water and.
Well, but lighting. These guys stole a car and they came to Rawlins and the cops started chasing them and they wrecked the car. So they stole another car and they took off for Sinclair and they wrecked that car. They rolled it. And they jumped out and they thought they would run to safety and they ran to the brightest lights. They ran to the prison. They caught them at the perimeter fence because they thought they were running to a giant nice shopping mall and that's how they got them. And that is a true story.
They were visiting their home before they went?
That was a fact.
Just searching for real estate.
Searching for real estate.
That and it and it, that was true. And because I was bidding on the pop and candy machines at the time and the the guy who was the warden at the time, I can't remember his name. We were laughing because he goes, yeah, they came right up that valley right there and and they're like you know, they didn't know that they got created with guns and stuff and true story. I mean, when was that? Not very long. Well, could have been twenty years ago. Twenty. Hey, that's not that long. That's not that long.
That's such a stupid word with like super experience.
The second old prison.
This historic.
Chris, you went to elementary school.
But yeah.
But I have been.
But that that's an example of what did lights do. They made them feel, like they were turning towards safety.
So if I do love this up, I do want to address, Rebecca, I'm grabbing justice. We had discussions um with the board on Second Street. So actually, the downtown district goes to Second Street. And so we were talking about how we did Sixth Street with the three colors on Pine, um Buffalo and Cedar, the 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 single slashes. And do we put those on Second Street and do that? We couldn't do it on Cedar. We're on state. Well, we could. Um, depending on what we find out, why not? But then then doing it on Cedar, Buffalo, and Pine again, we couldn't. We might, but again, we're gonna probably have to stay away from intersections that have um lights. But that side of the street is okay, but these lights are pretty bright and that's what we want, to light up the district. But there's homes there. And it's residential on that side. So we are being cognizant, you know, of, you know, so we had the discussion, okay, so the courthouse annex is there and Bank of Commerce is there and the church is there um on those four, on those three blocks right there. So we did not schedule, so pretty much we're saying, and 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 it it does, it's hard because those businesses between Third and Second, even on Cedar, feel it all the time. Like, we can't take summer fast that way. And so that's why we're really excited that we can at least take the light poles, have colors, have fun with them. But I just really, unless something changes, you know, we have to, I mean, we might not be able to do the Xs on Third Street. Maybe we can do the sink, what I'm calling the single strands um on Second Street, but.
You'd have to shut them off ten o'clock. I mean.
Yeah.
Because of the residences.
Yeah. And so just so you guys know, because I always like to make sure you guys have the information so you can share with your constituents, that's why we didn't go up Second Street on Buffalo and Pine.
Yeah.
There's not as many residential on Sixth Street. So there's a few, but not as many. And it kind of makes a nice little, what, nine blocks? No, twelve blocks. One, two, three, four.
If this works, you can expand it.
I was gonna say, did you, did you think about putting Xs on Sixth Street because of the overpass? It just, it's right on the
Killer.
You know.
I think this is really opening us up to, you know, um, I already, um, so Brian took guys, of course, we're gonna have to offer quotes and bids and do everything correctly. Um, but he was working with his lighting specialist where he gets the lights. They make these, but they still get the pieces. And he was explaining to his um supplier in Denver. And the supplier says, soon as they start going up, I want to see them because there's all these awards we could put in. Cause he's so excited. Um, he's like, nothing's ever been tried. I mean, like, they've done sections, like on Seventeenth Street, Cheyenne. Sheridan has some lights and, you know, but no one's ever done.
All of it.
Yeah. And you can see it for my A D. Again, I love that. It's a thousand dollar billboard a year. So any questions on details? I think I went through um engineering, I went through costs, I went through how we're doing it in phases to just really be methodical and correct and working with Y dot and before we cross any streets and, you know, I mean, they we are gonna follow all state rules, but I mean, you know, again, I'd love to do the blue, but we'll see.
I do have one question.
Sure.
And that is uh, a lot of the things that the city owns is insured through the city.
Right. That'll just fall under umbrella.
Okay. Cause I know like that pole that got ran over.
Yeah.
I don't know what the resolution to that was, but or if there was one or whatever.
The one down by the depot?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we, it was a hit and run. So there was, um, Mike and I did discuss that there was a a report written, but it was a hit and run. So it was all our insurance.
We can turn that into L G O P or whatever. Okay. I just want that fixed. You know, and and I was just wanting to make sure the insurance portion of it, that the city's insurance would cover all of this.
And these, these will sit back because we'll center them in the, you know, and back farther. So though these will most likely be back a lot farther than the Black Decker. And honestly.
If they run into one of these, you'll find them on the pole.
That's what I was gonna say. It would have been nice if it was structural because they wouldn't have hit and run. They would have been stuck right there.
Yeah, yeah. Great, great question, Mary.
Can you, can you bring up that strand?
The single strand?
The single strand?
There you go.
Yeah, that's good, right there. So that light's not on. As you can see, it's not on. And that's how much light it provides.
Yeah, look at that.
And that's just one strand. That's not the six strands that'll be in the center of the street. That's one single strand.
The problem with looking at photos is I can take, if you took that photo and you could barely see them lights, I could put it in Photoshop and make it look like that. That's why I'm asking, what's the real life?
That's, that's what it looks like.
Well, when they trimmed it.
Hey, you know what?
They went up over the curb. You see that bump on the left hand side?
Yeah.
And right through the middle of that light.
There's one, there's probably one reason someone would just drive off, right? Especially when they hit a power, a light pole like that.
They were fourteen or they were drunk. One hundred percent, I could probably.
You can see the skin marks on the sidewalk.
On the handy, you can see the skin marks on the handicap ramp.
Right through the, right through the center of that.
Right there. That's the handicap ramp. You could see skid marks on it.
And and the best part about that was those lights did not come disconnected from each other. They came off the pole, but they were still attached on.
Really? Well, because that's aircraft cable right there.
It is, yeah. Twenty-seven hundred and forty pounds per square.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know what the tensil strength is, but you can pull a tank with it.
Yeah. But it was interesting to come back and see that cord just hanging there without a light pole.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna call him four AM in the morning for him saying, hey, by the way, you got. So I'm gonna tell one funny story about lights. Second year I was in this job, so about sixteen years ago.
Long time ago, Chris.
Long time ago, Chris.
Stop dating yourself.
So we used to, we used to tape the lights under the front of the buildings.
They were, yeah.
They were duct taped. And then they would use an extension cord, an orange extension cord, do you remember that? And they would plug it into the light poles.
Yeah, and run to the roof.
So that's how those ones were plugged in?
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's a, somewhere in that block, there's a line that runs up there.
Yeah, so those, actually by this time, I had signed MOUs with all the property owners and we had applied hooks. But my first two years taped, do you remember that, Myra? And I would get calls.
What year was that? I remember being there, but.
Well, the Main Street Gallery was there. I had one of the date.
Eighty-four, six.
When it went to, when it went to DC was twenty-ten, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Wasn't that late?
Yeah. So those were actually, but I would seriously get, I would seriously get phone calls at two AM in the morning with people saying they had just left the bar. Hey, you have lights hanging. I mean, and they would be hanging down because they taped it. So after two, two years of that, first year I didn't know they were taped. I don't know why I didn't know it. It must have been a warm winter. And the second year, and then after that, I'm like, I remember walking into Dan Massey's office and saying, we're putting hooks on these buildings. And it was just Cedar Street. And everyone's like, why does Cedar Street just get it?
Cause we're out of tape.
We had enough money for one roll.
One roll of tape.
This is, this is the Washington DC Christmas tree. It was cut in Oregon.
Oh, and they transformed it.
And it transformed and we got it on a Friday night. We had.
Everybody in town, plus.
Thousand people in downtown.
They sat here and guarded you all night.
Oh, it was, was it cut?
Yeah, cause it's, oh, Wyoming's Christmas tree.
It was cut in Wyoming.
Oh, it was, yeah. And all them people were there to make sure the squirrel didn't get out.
Yeah, so true story. I, yeah, I used to get calls because of the duct tape.
Don't tell my wife, I don't want duct tape on my house. Don't tell her. She always wants to put up Christmas lights and I'm like, no.
And I do, and I do think, cause then Dan Massey created MOU, so to to hook them onto. And so that's why back in two thousand twelve, we've been with a MOU because we'd already had a lot of them from the property owners back.
Well, property owners change. There's a lot of those, not a lot of them, but well, there really is quite a few buildings downtown in the last ten years that have changed hands. And and actually, knowing what I know and looking at the age of some of them, uh, that's just gonna keep on going every ten years. Well, really, I mean, people retire. Yeah, both. I mean, people move on, you know, and then they, they retire, they sell their buildings or you know, they don't need it anymore for various reasons.
Some of the owners were also concerned about their roofs. They didn't want anybody on the roof because they are older buildings and getting the roofs to a point where they don't leak, they don't want anybody up there messing.
And then all of a sudden, you're, you're putting in a, a membrane, you're putting in a solar panel into the membrane.
That would have been a, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, in the end, I think, you know, eleven years later, I think, you know. But again, I think this is a win. We're being able to do a bigger footprint. We're still meeting the mission and the goal. We're getting colors now.
Which is awesome.
The, the, the power bill versus the cost of solar panels. By the time the solar panels would have wore out, you know what I mean? It's fifty-fifty. Yeah, it's fifty-fifty.
The batteries would kill you.
And you know, back then, we were doing LED. I mean, they just started, I mean, they were doing LED in two thousand and twelve, but.
They'll become much more efficient.
Careful, you're starting to date yourself.
Hey, fifty-nine.
Somebody have a rattletick and get this job.
So again, the last thing I want to say is you guys, our door, my board, I thought actually some of the board members were gonna come tonight.
I'm excited as ever. I really am. This is awesome.
Okay, but my door is always open. If you guys have a question, you wanna look at the books, you wanna know where we're at. Um, you know, the biggest thing is, we want to let you know that from originality to changes, we've changed council. We still have a mission and a focus. We're meeting that. We're back up here saying we're not asking you guys for money.
That's the best part. It really is, and I appreciate that.
Are you doing the Sweet Swarre this year?
Um, I don't know.
We, are you doing something? You don't know.
Can't talk.
Well, it's me, you know, we're, we're still down to one employee in the office. So we're one employee short, so we're having to cut back on services. But this is one thing that I just, we had to move forward. Again, come see me. I do have, um, so you guys can share. And you guys can share, so you guys actually have a printed packet. You can share people and if they ask questions like, well, why didn't they do this? You can have.
Thank you.
Information always.
Because back in two thousand and eight.
Take him now.
Twenty-twenty, does it?
Well, I, well, what I can tell you too is with lighting and just like dealing with signs and lights and stuff. There are so many things that change on a quarterly basis even. Like, I won't. This week I did nothing but I quoted about ten different signs. I didn't quote one of them without calling my supplier. Some things have gone way down. I couldn't believe it. Some things have gone way up. Most everything you're talking about came from China. So I mean, it's volatile. It just is.
Yeah. So that's the other thing is, even though we're not, if we get a confirmed price on those poles, so going back to my spreadsheet, I mean, if if we finish figuring out this still five by five and that's what the engineer wants, we're not gonna wait till next year to buy these five, these fifty poles. We're gonna buy them. Cause I've already been through this project with.
Till next year to give them.
Ah, Cheyenne. Get them out of that place in Cheyenne.
I mean, we've been through pricing and property owners and staff changing. I mean, we've seen the whole game.
Well, I gave you his creditors. You know, every time there's an election, every time there's a different board, all this and that, things get changed up and your tenacity is uh irritating and amazing at the same time sometimes. I'm serious. I mean, you just get it done. We wouldn't have had a mercantile if it wasn't for you. And I'm not telling that story again. You've all heard it, but.
It's, you know what?
You just have to go do it.
It's, it's a team. It's, um, you know, we have great board members. We have amazing volunteers and we have amazing sponsors like the City of Rawlins. You know, we have good corporate sponsors. It it really, and I said it, it takes a village.
It does.
Not one person, so. Okay.
Thank you, Pam. All right. Anything else before we?
Trick or treat on downtown streets.
Take a recess. What's that?
Trick or treat on downtown streets. We have lots of fun things planned. PD will be down, of course, they are down here, but uh, um, three to five on the thirty-first.
Time out.
Time out. He's doing his update in a couple of minutes.
Time out.
You're still in his folder.
So I'm gonna say, well, you already heard it.
What'd you say? I'm sorry. Okay.
That was the one thing I had left. Okay. I'm sure I'll find two or three other things to talk about.
Can I, can I just say one other thing before we quit here for, take a break? I I went to eat at the golf course and uh, Debbie and I took the last two seats in the restaurant and the other room was about half full. And uh, it was pretty awesome. It was good food, good, you know, good service and uh, I, it was nice to go in there and see it busy. It really was.
I I can tell you guys, we did, I did a special dinner for Scott for his birthday at the end of August. I did a tomahawk um on a platter. I did a family style bowl of mashed potatoes, garlic mashed potatoes. I did four seasoned salads and then I did a big piece of salmon and the four of us. And it was, I mean, my husband never talks about food and that it's good. And he was like, this is really good. And so we had a, so um, Wendy did a family style dinner for us. We pre-ordered everything with a dessert. We had appetizers and just, and it was amazing.
You know, it's just nice to have just another fine place to go eat. We have, we have some great places, but you know, we were, we lost some numbers there for a while. It's nice to see some coming back.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a couple of other new restaurant things possibly happening, so.
I had a guy approach me. I'll be talking to you about it. He, he's lived here for a while, but he doesn't know anybody. And he's not bashful.
Okay.
Cause as soon as he found out who I was, every time I see him, we sit down for a half hour and but he's got really good ideas and between him and his wife, they have forty-some years of experience and uh.
Perfect spot for him.
Yeah, and he, and he uh.
Sorry.
Yeah. I'll be introducing you to him this next week. All right, so let's take a break until seven-thirty.
I was gonna say, we could go check out the lights real quick, you know, but you you're, you're, your walker, your walker's not gonna make it that far that quick.
I trust you. Chris, listen, I trust you. Go tell me what they look like. I have a hundred percent faith in you.
Run right on down there.
I'll meet you there.
Yeah, Jackie, run down there.
I'm not running.
Let's do some weight training. Hugging on your back.
Oh, wait, I forgot about that.
I just sent you this.
I mean, I'm putting in the poles or hiring, I'm putting in the poles.
It's just, she just sent it to me. I replied to.
What did she send? When did she send it to?
Uh, the other day, I.
Thank you for putting that out.
Do you mind me looking?
Lynn, you put videos on board talk?
Yeah, for that video.
Yeah, you might just put it on.
Cause it was.
Just me, I'm letting out. Oh, I sent it off to Steve and he don't know what his password is, obviously. Oh, yeah. Kenny reset it. Forgot what the new one is. No, I was talking about Terry. Wow, your memory's gone. Your aging memory is lapping you.
What the hell? I did not change it.
I will tell you this, Chris, you're gonna talk us through your mouth on the counter.
That's right.
What else did you have on your list that I took?
I was just gonna go off with that, but you snagged all this stuff, so.
That's okay.
Why do I not know? What's my password? It wants my old one?
Old password first.
I did that. I just did it. Oh.
Oh, no, 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 no. Put your old password in.
I did.
Do it again. Do it again. Let me help you out. Old password. Don't hit enter.
What'd you have for breakfast, Chris?
Nothing.
Or lunch or dinner.
New.
Wheaties?
I do that every time I hit enter.
New.
Steve, do you need me to stay for your DDA report?
No, no.
Enter now. Whoa. It changed. It worked.
So you're a good man, right? You don't need anything else.
This is sharp. Is this your pen?
Nope.
This is not your pen?
That's yours.
You're sure it's not your pen?
Yep, and it ain't ever gonna become my pen. Oh, gosh.
Is it, is it a commission, very commission?
Oh. Okay. Did I get somebody to make an amendment to the agenda to remove item? B, A, or A day. Get your glasses on. I got it. Fire commission and report.
Okay, you're not here? Come on?
Okay, hold on. What's the date? Seventeen?
Yes.
It's a what? Eight, eight?
Eight, eight.
So Lynn, I'm gonna share the video with you as an iPhone link?
Which one?
Or not iPhone?
I sent.
I get the one.
I have one on goals.
Okay, that one. That's the one. That's the one I got.
All right.
Ready? Only simple question.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't wait to see the lights, you know.
Why?
It's a simple question. Why? So.
Which one? A or B?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Why? And the reason I'm, I, cause I asked the same question.
Right.
Why? How did you get that? Where did you come from? Where did that? Where, what was driving that? What drives that? And since I can't answer that for you, that's, that would be my question. Why? What does it do? What's, what's the end and how does that fit the end?
Right.
I have a really, I have a really simple question. We have the greatest people in the world that live in our city.
We have what?
The greatest people in the world.
We do.
Right? Build the city for them. That's why. That's why you do it. Because we're building the city for them. We're not building the city for us. We're not building the city for anybody else. We're building the city for them. So how does that, this is the question you get to ask. Bring it to me head, isn't it? Tell me. How does that get there? How does that get there? What does that do in regards to where else can we stay? That's the question. I'm answering that. Cause I, I have the same question for you, for Jackie. I have the same one. She sent one out this morning.
Yes.
So, Terry. Yeah, I did the same thing. I did the same thing to him this morning. Why?
Why?
What does that do to get you to what you think the end should be? Cause reverse engineering is far more effective than trying to figure out where you're headed without knowing where you're headed. Where you go, okay, wait, I think we should have, like I said, Red House is. That's, that's a, that's a project. That's what, a Red House is a project. Does the Red, does the Red House project fit the end? Probably not.
Right.
Why? Why is the question that we should ask about every single thing we, when we think about it, that should be the question we ask? Why? To what end does this accomplish the goal of creating an environment that is equal to the people? So, why? I'm gonna ask her the same question. Cause her answer is actually on the very bottom of the page. It'll be on the very top of the page or it's on the very bottom of the page. I'm reading through and I'm reading through and I read through and I go, we start there. Cause that, if you put that at the top and then that's always at the top, then every decision we make is based upon that. Doesn't matter what it is. Do we need another fire truck? I don't know. Does it fit that? Does it, does it do anything for this? If it doesn't do anything for this, the answer's just no. It doesn't matter who wants it, why they want it, irrelevant, doesn't matter. It's still just no. Why? Cause it doesn't get. Getting here is the, doesn't matter what it is. If you're gonna provide the perfect environment, you're gonna need perfect water, perfect sewer, perfect street, perfect. Maintenance of law. Starting with the stairs, going back and forth, we need. That's, you know, you just compare it to that. Everything gets compared to here and if it doesn't get here, what are you doing it for? Why are you doing it? It makes no sense. Disneyland, I'm a big fan of Disneyland, not because it's Disneyland and I like Disneyland, cause I don't, I'm not a big fan. I'm not a big fan of the park. I don't like the park. But the one thing about Disneyland that I will say is that they know their environment. They've made it that way. They made it that way for a reason. Disney World and Disneyland are very different. Disneyland, eighty percent of the people who go to Disneyland go multiple times in a year. Eighty percent of the people that go to Disney World go once, one time. They are meticulous about hiding every, the fantasy has to be complete. You don't see the back of lights. You don't see electrical wire. You don't ever get to see behind the scenes. It's, mm-mm. That never, ever, ever, ever happens. Because that would interrupt the fantasy. And they're so locked into the fact that the fantasy is what we're set. That's what we're setting. Anything that interrupts that sale, interrupts that fantasy is not satisfying. The fantasy is everything. So for the question of what you're gonna do for your city, treat it like Disneyland. If it doesn't fit this, or if it doesn't meet this, step away. So when I say why, why, how does that fit into? I'm telling you my, my not.
Right.
Right? So I'm telling you that I'm, I'm gonna try to match everything to how do I create a place that matches how great the people are? How do we get them now? And so I can now go. Are our parks perfect? How did I think, and I, and I did it yesterday with my, my daughter and my friend.
Hey Pam.
We went and played in the park a little bit.
Hey Pam.
And I'm walking around the park going.
Hey Pam.
Just kind of working on Depot Park.
Hey, I.
In Depot Park, we have a lot of the same.
I got a, I got a quick question for you.
And in Depot Park, we need it all back to get ready for the transportation. We need a license. And I'm looking at it going. It hasn't been done yet.
We probably, we probably won't do any fun flashing long like.
Okay, does that mean?
Main door or like.
Does that mean?
We'll, we'll have.
Giving that.
I'm having all those conversations.
You could do like one or two down.
Does that block there? Nope. Yeah, I was gonna like, what do we need to do with that?
You could do like one or two down.
So we have chains between all these stanchions, you know, they call those the block.
Well, you can do it like red, white, blue and stuff like that.
The chain's loose. It's a chain.
It's gonna be so, and, and.
I think it's a good idea.
I need the chain welded so it cannot be moved. Well, the links together so they can't be moved. So kids can't come in and swing and rip it like a forest. Cause that's what they're doing.
It's another toy.
Right, but if it's a solid link and.
It's just like the ones in my house almost. Roof lights.
Oh, yeah.
I like a roof light.
They can sit on it. It'll swing back and forth, but it won't move down and it won't move up. It won't move left and it won't move right. So they can't jerk on it hard enough or jump on it hard enough to pull it out of the other end. Especially when it's not. It's a simple.
Around the holidays and stuff like that, like downtown, you go a couple down.
How long's it been painted since it's been?
About all of them, just one or two of them.
I wish I could.
You know, the different.
I've lived here seventeen years. I live right down the street. And I never really looked at it that way until I walked in the other day.
Christmas with the.
Have you seen the?
That looks super cool.
Well, and, yeah, with the, yeah, with the snowplight.
Let's make everything match to that.
That's what I said.
I think you'd do a better job being in front of the buildings.
Let's get to that.
Well, so my question is, is when they were all one color lighting versus making the.
You gotta have that, the cost of the materials and tons.
And we don't have to worry about.
Those are the obvious things.
But if we're taking.
Does it have to be?
We can make a difference.
City employees? No.
I do a lot where we finally got through all of some everything.
Does it have, does it have like fifteen people that don't have that part?
Yeah.
We provide.
Now you see why I said we could add one in the center if their structure we sound.
You did it. We get to say, great job.
We just line them even if we wanna.
Only one apple though, besides having one down the post.
That's what I was just saying, like.
What you were saying.
And this is a lot of.
So you're talking about.
You're absolutely a hundred percent correct when you talk about lighting and safety, right? Because.
Here.
I know a lot of people traveling when they go to places traveling and they'll just nap in their cars.
You, you.
They will not nap or go somewhere unless it is.
I've never met anybody that ever went and got a job.
One hundred percent. They will sit right under street lights.
Never happened. And I've hired hundreds of people in my lifetime and that's never been a question.
Whenever you do it up, you're gonna be like, oh.
So does that meet that? Should you have one? Absolutely. You gotta have something that defines those, those rules and those jobs that you have to have, but is that? Does that get you into this priority up here? Does it get you here?
If we could get.
We might not ask it, but they, they do ask. Your benefits, your benefits are stated in your chart.
Yes.
And that helps.
Your benefits.
That we're, we're pulling from.
What did you say the polls would go like? Each?
Ninety-nine percent of them would go, just as long as you tell me whether or not I'm, I got vacation pay if I, if you're contributing to my retirement fund. If you tell me the basics, I'm good. We have a hundred and fifty-five.
That's not bad.
Well, I know.
That's not bad.
That's not what they're, that's not what they're looking for. Not the answers they're going to want. Who do we write?
Hey, hey.
We're writing it for them.
So six hundred for a pole. What is the light cost on the street?
What's that?
The employees.
The little lights on the corners.
They didn't.
So this is what we wanted. When we do things, we make.
That's the immediate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So there are some, do you think?
Plus installation.
Yeah, so, but I'm just saying, look, look at what you're getting, what we have and you don't, and how many times is a truck running those over?
Right, so the question.
And then we work towards that strength anytime we're, we're working. We don't like to go into places that are uncomfortable. It's just human nature. We don't like climbing down where the bears are. That could be dangerous.
Chris just solved your problem.
What?
They're all gonna be lit up. Do we really need those bollards?
No, you don't need them. You just put.
No. The answer to your question is no, you don't need them.
So then I put a nice, like a little up here or, you know what I mean? But, but you put.
As soon as you light it up, Pam, they're not gonna come on.
Yeah, so, so what you do is. Here's a. So you don't need those, but now you could put in instead of those, you could have a decorative like safety pole to protect the planters and stuff. Then guess what? If someone does hit it, oh, that's gonna be known. It's not, it's their fault.
Well, they're actually, the original ones we had were spun aluminum and they were six hundred and some odd dollars a piece.
That's what I was just.
And then we said, we can't tell the difference between that and the five dollar piece of PVC that we use now.
Yeah.
That's it.
But.
Yeah, that's five hundred dollars.
But you see what I'm saying? Like you could put something to protect the planters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we might continue to think about moving them back away from the curb.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna put in something for the plant, for the porch.
No, I wanna see the panels.
Yeah, that would make, yeah.
Let's just take them off. You did it on your own.
For screws and a pipe underneath the, the, we have some extra. So you, we figured out it's really cool what we have to cover, cause we still have the metal coming out, the good side off, but it looks really tacky. So we could do like really get a whole like.
Laser edge.
I shut that off.
Like top, we have an analog for the pro, and that's, so we would see.
People would walk around going, look at that.
I would do one hundred.
I don't know.
At six hundred dollar pole, what do you need to be centered?
Right, then just do it in your head and then go, does, all the questions I ask, do they mean?
Do you, do you Cedar Street?
Oh, yeah. In my, in my opinion, you might.
Would be worth ordering them by order.
Cedar and apple pit.
You know.
And as soon as we all get, cause we'll eventually.
And I'd like to just, I'd like to get. I'm the same.
You get several things, then you got messes and they don't have to win right there.
And then from there, the decision-making process becomes so much simpler because you go, does that mean? And you go, no. Why are we about none of this again?
That's what I said. It's so much structural. What are we? I didn't, I thought. I think like real quick.
This is.
Myself, Steve, you probably didn't think that, think about those questions that passed up. They just happen, but I.
Give me the top and the same. So I can compare.
Yeah.
They changed all the rest, yeah, through here, got rid of the light.
Because as soon as I can go, yes, we wanna make sure every time we make a decision, it has the word purple in it. So if the piece of paper comes and it doesn't have the word purple in it, why are we talking about it again? Cause it doesn't have the one thing I want, but we all have the stuff that we want, which is the word purple. And that doesn't say, doesn't say the word purple.
It's unreal. How long ago that's been?
And does it make sense if we have the word?
That works with that?
No. It's the next meeting and we can speed up our meetings. It's not that I've. Cause I don't want the debate part, but what I want to do is I want to always be able to compare.
Every year.
That, uh, that was a removal when they get all the apps and then they remove the ones up here. That Harshman kid got killed.
Why are we even?
Was it Harshman?
They reported.
No, he killed.
They removed all at the same time.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. The only ones that they left was the ones that buy the, uh, Armory and all that. Hey, hey, if this works good, that's a proposed state, but if they could, they could put those to light that whole area.
Well, this is my strength. I wanna be, I wanna go home and I wanna chop onions. Cause I don't know how to cook. I wanna go home and do that. Does that, does that fix that?
That would be awesome.
Like Main Street.
Cause if I was fitting everybody, then I would, then we'd all be able to.
Well, there's often opportunities to line the whole.
And this makes sense. That's how that relates to that. Cause he's gonna do that for everyone. Anytime we make a decision, it's just minute in, in, in regards to the space in the city or the few states or this is, this bothers me. Corporate, I think this in my own head sometimes.
The way finding signs that we have.
They might sit up and say, you need to clean out your weeds when you can walk, hide in the parking lot. They might sit up and say, you need to clean out your weeds when you can walk, hide in your parking lot.
So we don't congest?
This is my rule. I come here, who works?
For these lights.
How can I?
So same issue, same, same situation, okay, yeah, 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 we're not congesting, okay.
I don't meet that.
I don't meet.
The ordinance.
I brought it up, come about, see where you take the replacement, like black lights, there's bulbs in them, there's.
I wonder.
You know.
No, that's him giving it up, or the city not doing it. We can't enforce those laws in good time, without.
With the city, you know, being.
Oh, yeah.
So until we make that, why are we expecting that to happen?
You know, just besides the bread.
Was changing some of those alpines.
Does that mean, this thing up here is my city hall, I come to work right now, does it mean?
They have a program, I'm interested in Rollins, and I'd like to go back there.
Anybody has been there right now?
Well, it's.
Well, yeah, but I talked about it, so no.
Why don't you, because I enjoy that.
To go over here and buy tickets.
We, we pay, we pay for like Christian, but I don't think we make it.
I don't see why.
We pay for it.
So, that's what I mean, some, we're talking about the decision. All I can compare is.
The other was the city, they took repus.
I can get this super job, because you keep looking back on, you know, I don't know. No, you're going off the same way, we can't ask them, we can't do whatever. I, I had firm rules when I worked, when I covered, which was.
It was like keeping down Fifth Street.
If I won't do the job. I'll clear my history.
Yeah, no, I need, I would come back every year.
It's more, it's more possible.
I will get that, thank you.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I meant when I said.
What lights do we have?
She would love her seat.
I should.
I like her outfit, it's cute. You look spiffy.
I should, chipper, chipper.
Two different arms, two different lights, I mean, cause, I do good. As, as things are changing out, let's, so that's why, when we realize we're gonna put poles in, I'm like, okay, we're gonna keep it consistent. Maybe a different vendor, but it's gonna look, it's gonna be coded the same color.
That's what I was talking about, the main ones for like downtown, if you guys order them, they had all of these, all that, it's all done.
Yeah, I'm gonna order all of this.
I just said the same thing.
Yeah, so maybe for the additional, like Christmas, yeah.
Read your bottom line. The top, it's, why is?
Was my bottom line a goal, or was it just a random statement?
It was the.
How are you? Okay.
You made it as if, this is a random thought, no, but it was the statement.
So it was, it was powerful?
It was, it was, yes, it was, it was literally the statement.
Okay.
If you start there and then compare to that, everything you asked or everything you said, did you compare it to that?
Sure.
Okay.
Because that's, that's the start.
All right. You're funny, Steve. I like that my seats warm.
What?
My seats warm. It kept it warm.
What is, what is this one?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, hot.
Okay, just call me when you're ready.
Yep, I will. Okay, thank you again.
Okay. Oh shoot, we got thirty seconds to go, what am I?
Are we ready to join?
Yeah, it's ready.
It's ready.
She's on it.
She's on it.
She's on it. Yes, you've got to turn that on.
What is this? What is that?
It's telling us they couldn't move something. Don't sound good. Sometimes I can't migrate from one thing to another. Can't, they can't get it to go from one software thing to another software thing.
Perfect. Everybody ready?
All right, the time of seven thirty has arrived, I'll call this meeting to order, and would everybody please join for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, next thing on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykum.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stephen Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner. Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelof.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, the next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the agenda, and with removing agenda item eight A.
Would you state the date, please?
Oh, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, thank you, there's been a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Getting ahead of myself, sorry, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, uh, agenda as amended, removing item eight A. Is there any discussion?
Just, uh, removing, the reason it's being removed.
Well, the reason, uh, that, uh, that item has been removed is the, uh, people cannot be here tonight, the fire commission annual report, okay? Is there any discuss, further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Alrighty, thank you, next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion, Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the city consent agenda for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the city council, uh, consent agenda of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Alrighty, thank you, the next thing on our agenda is the public comment period, it's pursuant to resolution number two C dash ninety-six, which sets a time for public comment of five minutes. About anything that is not on the agenda, is there anybody here that would like to speak to that? Please come forward and tell us who you are and sign your name. On the podium.
My name is Debbie Wykum, and. I am here to speak on, well, I will tell you, I've got some notes, because I have a lot to say. In June of twenty-one, when it was, I seemed like much younger, I adopted the tunnel by the post office, I've been scraping the tunnel off and on since. Between COVID, four surgeries between us and a stress fracture, and a bunch of other crap, we got her done. I suffered only a scraped cheek and a ripped out earring, but I mean, by we, I mean the mayor and me, Mrs. Mayor. After thirty gallons of paint and two days' work, we finally accomplished our goal to make it brighter and safer. I painted kills over the graffiti like three times, and I've only got one new one on there, and I don't think it's really bad, but I think it says basically safe, pardon my defects, well, it's a tunnel, and it's not perfect, but, and if I were still a cop, I'd be looking for a tall person, because the walls are like seven foot tall, and it's at the very top. I hope that's everyone in the community who takes pride and discourages that, and maybe a little extra patrol chief, now and then. We still have to paint the rails and the year nineteen fifty-one, which is a tunnel's age, and makes it one year older than the mayor.
Chris. You've been dated victims.
Almighty, he's been dated.
My deepest thanks to the mayor, AKA my husband, for letting me volunteer you to paint when it was ready. He painted all but like ten foot of the tunnel, and helped with the prepping, the unloading, loading, cleaning, and did it all again the next day. Thank you to Vice Mayor Sanger, who loaned us his generator and a hundred foot of hose, we could not have done without your help and advice, we're pretty sure he probably won't hire us after that, but, I'm okay with that too, that was a lot of work. Thanks to the city staff, especially Michael O'Brien for the pylons and the cardboard, and Myra for putting out the information of the temporary closure. Thank you to the man in the wheelchair who's only means to get to the other side, who apologized for getting in our way for your kind words of encouragement and gratefulness. Thank you to all those who came through during this long project with all the gratefulness and encouraging words, including the woman who doesn't have to worry about the tunnel spider anymore getting in her hair, and the other women and kids that feel safer, because it's brighter. I don't know how many we had in there, probably forty, fifty go through in the last couple of days, and while I was doing it, there was probably hundreds, and they all, some of them wanted to grab a broom, some just admired it, some said, that's a lot of work, thank you. Thank you to Charity Campos, who stopped by because she heard it was happening. We found out that she cleaned up her own yard and about a block around her house, which I think helped her neighbors, prompted her neighbors to also pitch in and do their yard. She also cleaned up Martinez Park, which is wonderful. It was a whole lot of work, and I thought I would die, but I didn't, and the reward of the end made it totally worthwhile and amazing, I hope others do the adoption thing, you will see what I mean, thank you.
Thank you, is, don't, uh, nothing.
You can't comment.
No comment, you can't comment back. Is there anybody else that would like to stand up and comment at this time? Okay, thank you, next thing on our agenda is, uh, uh, board appointments and presentations, and so, uh, this presentation, uh, I will turn the floor over to Sheriff Alex Bocken.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, uh, thank you, Debbie, I'm not nearly as well organized as Debbie, I have no notes, so please bear with me as I do this, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, for those of you who have, um, kind of been paying attention to what we're doing at the sheriff's office, we're, we're doing a lot of new things that we really haven't done before, so we've implemented a new school resource officer program, we've explored some contract options for law enforcement services with some other municipalities, we've implemented a new promotional board system utilizing other agencies and panels, and when you implement new things like this, it means that there's no infrastructure in place, and to create things like this from scratch is extremely labor intensive. Luckily for us, and this is where I want to mention Chief Ward, every time I called the Rollins Police Department to ask, hey, have you guys done this before, nine times out of ten, Chief Ward would say, yeah, we have, do you happen to have a policy or procedure that, that talks about this? Yeah, we do, you want it? Yeah, absolutely, please, thank you, so I just wanted to take the chance to publicly thank Chief Ward and the Rollins Police Department for all the assistance they've given us in these first ten months, uh, we've implemented a lot of new programs, and we had to build the infrastructure from scratch, and Chief Ward and his guys at Rollins Police Department were able to provide a lot of formats for us to utilize and tailor to our own department, and in doing so, they saved us quite literally hundreds of hours of work. So, Chief Ward, thank you very much, I really appreciate that, and then I'd also like to thank you guys, the council, when you support the police department, you in turn support us, and that helps us and it helps the community, so, if you wouldn't mind, Chief, I've got a, we never had challenge coins as a department, so we went ahead and got them made, after I saw the police department had them. I thought they looked pretty cool, so we went and had them made, so.
It says Rollins Police.
So Chief, I've got one for you, thanks a lot, I appreciate all that, you've been awesome, and if you don't mind if I approach, I've got one for each of the council members as well.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Please do.
Thank you, guys, um, I would still be hunched over a computer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Now I'll get out of your hair, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, one of the best parts of the evening, all right, next thing on our agenda is, uh, city council reports, and so we'll go to board of adjustments, uh, uh, Councilman Seelof?
We did have a meeting here recently, and they wanted to bury a Ford, uh, garage in the front yard, and we denied it, and made suggestions to him, and he's working on something to come back to us to redo it, so it's acceptable.
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, uh, uh, council, Carbon County Council of Governments, that's a board I'm on, uh, our next meeting is, uh, November fifteenth, I think, but it's in November, so I have nothing new, we'll go to the DDA Main Street, uh, that is, uh, Vice Mayor Sanger's board, um.
Um, we had our meeting yesterday, I'm gonna cover most of the stuff that we went through, um, we went through the brownfield assessment for the Ferguson building, um, the ice, the ice rink, which we've donated to the Hannah Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, good for you guys.
Um, with the skates and everything, Mike Luhan was gonna come and pick them up and take them over there, um, we've managed to gather all of our stuff into one building, um, it's right on Buffalo Street, it's right next to the Daily Times, um, in the building that used to be Jackalope, so we managed to corral our seven buildings worth of stuff into one place. Our, the workshop, which is a, a training trailer that was supposed to come here, we don't have, um, the manpower to handle it right now, we're gonna, we're gonna put it off until January, um, we are in sweet soray discussions, that's, uh, we are talking about that, um, and then you had the presentation tonight for the downtown light project, um, all the other stuff we're working on deals basically with, uh, business support, um, throughout the downtown and how to best help them, um, get ready for the holiday seasons, so, that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next one is Rollins Planning Commission, uh, Councilman Weisberg?
Um, our meeting was canceled the other night due to the fact that there's a lot of, uh, issues with the Title Nineteen ordinance and stuff like that going on, so, it's planned for, I believe, November seventh, um, that, uh, we're gonna have a board of adjustments and council meeting together for a workshop, so, uh, it'll be, bring up all the issues with what is being presented and everything else, and a lot of it has to do with industrial, uh, area with toe, towing your wrecking yards and stuff like that, so, that's when we are gonna have our meeting, same night as our workshop.
And we're gonna have a combined workshop?
Combined workshop with council and, uh, planning and zoning, oh, what's planned.
One thing, that meeting has been changed to the following council work session, it'll be the twenty-first, due to some scheduling, so it will not be on November seventh.
Okay.
Okay, so I wanted to let everybody, it will be the twenty-first, it is a, a work session. Now, I don't know if you're, you, you still might have another meeting.
Yeah, I just seen that, uh, the email for that one, the seventh or whatever, so.
Yeah, it should be going out saying the twenty-first.
Okay.
So, yes, due to the scheduling conflicts, okay?
That's all I had.
All right, thanks, and then, uh, Urban Systems Committee is, is, uh, Councilman Garner's, he's not here tonight, so I will move on to, uh, city manager and staff reports, I'll turn the floor over to you, uh, Tom?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, to start tonight, I will give a brief update on the Urban Systems Committee, I was able to attend that, um, that was held October sixteenth here at City Hall, the two main topics that were discussed there, one is, is the pedestrian underpass, on, on, um, the bypass and Harshman up there, that was discussed, it, uh, the design of that is still being worked on, and it looks like that construction will be able to begin there in the summer of two thousand twenty-five, is what they're looking at, and that it was also on our sixth penny, um, ballot, that, but the, uh, Wyoming Department of, of Transportation will, will be footing most of that bill, if not all of it. The other one that was described was the Sixth Street Bridge here, and, um, as we have, have discussed before, YDOT, um, has some funding for that, and it looks like they'll be able to fund ninety percent of that project with the other ten percent falling back to the city. That also looks like it'll be at least the summer of twenty-five before that would get started, so we have some time to discuss that, so.
Can, can I ask one quick question about that? With the rebuild of that overpass, is there any possibility of getting the walkway back?
I will ask on that.
Because there used to be.
There used to be. I, I know there was a walkway.
Okay.
And I will ask on that.
Thank you.
Yep. This last Wednesday, October eleventh, we had our Brownfield kickoff on the grant. Um, we had speakers here from Kansas State University, from Manhattan, Kansas, people here from Cheyenne, the state. We were able to, um, to, uh, look at the five properties that have been identified through the state portion of the grant, through the Spurs Grant. And we also had some discussion and recommendations on the five hundred thousand that the city received through that Brownsville grant. We will, um, have further discussion with council on what properties that we will look at. We are just gathering right now which ones that we feel are, are eligible, and then we will, we will bring that list to council for the approval of that list. November second is the next, um, SLIB meeting in Cheyenne, the State Loan Investment Board, November second. This is significant because the SLIB board will hear the, uh, case for the ARPA grants that are out. We call it ARPA four. It's the, the fourth issue. We have submitted our grant for the design of the water line, all the way from the springs, the design in the springs, down through the water line, and then beyond the tanks into town on the iron duct tile line. We will hear that day whether that will be funded or not. We have heard preliminary that, that the SLIB board has forwarded our grant on as a recommendation to fund. But that's the preliminary thing, and so whoever would like to go to Cheyenne with us on that day to, uh, go before the board, you know, to, to, uh, tell them about our, our project is, is welcome to. Let us know. We will get, um, hotel rooms and whatever we need to do on that. I shared last meeting about the landfill coupons that, um, twelve hundred twenty-four of the, of the, uh, coupons for, you know, for a free trip, uh, were, were utilized at five hundred and seventy-four point nine five tons of MSW at a cost of forty thousand two forty-six, and I was asked to, to get the numbers from the previous year. So for two thousand twenty-two, we had one thousand and two turned in, which would be, uh, two hundred and twenty-two less than the current year. So we've seen an increase of two hundred and twenty-two that were turned in. And back then it was four hundred and sixty-one tons at a cost of twenty-eight thousand forty-two.
Quick question. You said MS and W, it's, it's C and D, correct?
It's C and D.
Okay. I just want to make sure that
Sorry.
we, we used it for the proper.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's correct. Um, so it was about twelve thousand more in cost that we had, so. Um, I, I have received, uh, council goals from three council members. I'm still waiting on four. Uh, council members on the, uh, council goals that you would like. Once I receive those, I will compile those, and we'll be able to either have a work session or something with the council to go over those goals. And we will put together some ideas through department heads as to how we can achieve this as possible ways to get there. And then we will bring that to council and have a discussion.
Can I just say one thing? Uh, the discussion has been, um, that, um, we have this strategic plan, and I believe most of what you're gonna receive is copacetic with that or very close to that. And what, what I'm, I would like to propose, and I'd like to see what everybody else thinks, is a, um, a retreat by the council, and I'm not saying let's go to Las Vegas or nothing like that. I, I wish I was, but, um, I, I'm thinking something like at, uh, one, one of the motels, rent a room. Of course, we would have to allow the public to come, which I have no problem with. They wouldn't have input or anything. But that would give us a chance to, uh, sit down, go through the goals, the, melt all these things together, and, and to talk about them, and, um, that, that's what I would propose. I don't know if anybody else is interested in that or not, but, um.
I think it would narrow down the amount of material that would, we would give Tom to have to cipher through.
Right, and do that maybe before you go to your department heads.
Yeah, just compact it down to, we have these three things that we, we really, really.
Try to hunt with a rifle instead of a shotgun kind of approach.
Well, I think that, like I said, there were, after that, you know, we would have to get the, uh, department heads in to accomplish these, you know, the goals set by council. And then, um, during the budget preparation of next year's budget, we'd want to make sure that these items are, are in the budget so that we can carry those forward without having to look for budget at, at that time. So we'll get them in the budget and make sure that they're accomplished.
And, and as far as that workshop, uh, maybe we could have it sometime in November-ish. Is that, everybody okay with that?
We only have one meeting available in November if we're doing a workshop with the, uh,
Right.
with, uh, planning and zoning.
Well, but this will be a completely different day. It won't be a Tuesday. It'd be more than likely a Saturday or, or something like that.
Yeah.
So maybe what we all ought to do is email Tom available dates in November on weekends. Is that okay with y'all?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Perfect. Uh, city staff is working on a comprehensive emergency plan for snow removal. We are about eighty to eighty-five percent of the way through that plan, so we're hoping by the next council meeting, we're able to share that with council. And what we are, are looking at is, is depending upon the, the amount of snow, once it hits certain depth, we would go to a different phase of this plan, so that we, we can make sure that we have all three scenarios of, of depths of snow covered as to what we'll do. And we would like to share that with, with council, maybe at the next meeting, is what we're hoping. I'd like to, uh, to, uh, thank the, uh, mayor and his wife on behalf of the city of Rollins for the work that they performed on the underpass. The painting of that, um, I went down, looked at the work. It's, it's great, and we
Thank you.
really appreciate all the service to the city, um, from you and your willingness to do that, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is my report.
All right. Thank you, Tom. The next thing on our agenda is a direction from city council to city manager, and, uh, I don't have anything. Does anybody else? Yes?
I just have one thing, Tom. Um, I know we've discussed it before, but the rec center is closed on the weekends right now, and I really have a strong inclination that we could hire sixteen-year-olds to work the desk.
Yes.
I don't know why we ha, we in the past didn't hire people under the age eighteen, but.
From my, from my understanding, which I will get further understanding, is, uh, it, it, it comes through our insurance.
Okay.
That, that they're the ones that have basically set eighteen.
Okay.
Um, just so that we can be covered on all city assets, and I know some of that, you know, is desk work.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I believe that is, is why that we've had to go with eighteen.
Okay.
But I will look and make sure that there are, aren't different classifications, like you said, that they could fill some classifications and maybe not others.
Yeah.
I will look into that.
Uh, it just seems like it would be a cool job for a sixteen-year-old to do on the weekends when they don't have whatever, but.
Yeah, but that's what it is right now. It's just a lack of staff.
Yeah, yeah. That's my only thing. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for looking into that.
One of the stumbling blocks we had this summer was taking so long to do background checks so a guy can run a lawnmower. Can you look into expediting that to where if somebody, if, if, if somebody sixteen or eighteen even applies for a job, they're not gonna wait. They're gonna go get another job. Can we?
I will, I, I will follow up on that. That's been on my list, but I haven't
Sure.
got that. I will follow up with that.
Okay, because I think that's a real stumbling block to getting summer help as well as help like councilmen.
You have to wait six weeks to get the background check. Summer's half over.
They'll have a job. They'll go do something else. Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, Tom, a while back, it was, it's been quite a while ago, um, there was a tree study being done, uh, through Parks and Rec, I believe. Uh, can you get the status update on that? And the reason I'm asking about the tree study is because I had proposed a idea a long time ago about widening streets in the Mountain View area because they're so narrow, um, and for safety reasons and stuff like that, so. I know that was the beginning of that, uh, start, that needed to be done, and the research of who owns the green belts through there, the trees and all that stuff, uh, so that goes hand in hand with some of the stuff that I'd like to see done too with projects to meet a goal that I have, and I will email you those, that goal, so.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, uh, we'll move to, uh, unfinished business, which is, uh, uh, the designation of the two thousand twenty-three funds for the, uh, from Wyoming Community Gas. I know, I, I'm just gonna start real quickly because last time we talked, um, I talked about, um, maybe using that money for the Bolton Park, and since then, it, it has come, uh, reality has set in, and that money is not enough to really do anything, um, for that project, so I think there's a better way to get that done, so, um, you know, I would just, right out of the gate, withdraw that, so, um, ma, because the way this works is Wyoming Gas wants to walk up to something new, neat, shiny with their name on it and point to it, and I don't believe that really meets the, uh, objective for them. Anybody else? Yes?
I'm still in favor of the ball fields. That's where I stay.
What part of the ball field?
Um, the, whatever's gonna get teams to come here and play.
One, one of the things that got brought up was that scoreboard at the General's Field, and I've had discussions with Councilman Weisenberg about I don't necessarily think that eleven thousand dollars will do that job.
No.
But he suggested, and it's not, and I'm speaking for you, so you, if, if I say it wrong, please speak up, but he suggested, and it makes really good sense, because we did this before for the dog park. We, we did two, we set it aside, and then next year took it and did the project. And if we did that, now that would be enough to do a really nice scoreboard, so.
And to have their name right up there.
Right up there, and so I'll be honest with you, that's kind of the direction I, I'm leaning, but.
Or if we save this money and somebody else donated money to it, the other half of it.
Sure.
Then it could have both their names on it, and it could be done sooner.
Sure.
But I think in talking to, um, our rec director
Jason.
Yeah, didn't he emphasize the, what was more important to him was getting the fields.
Here, here's the discussion I had with several people. Do you want to buy a bunch of dirt or a scoreboard? Because he's talking about the infield or a scoreboard. And laying awake at night at two and three in the morning, like I do, I came up with scoreboard, but, um.
I think Community Gas would rather have a scoreboard. I mean,
I do too.
unless you plan on writing their name in the dirt, but, um, I think Jason feels that the, the fields would be the priority because they would be
Ready for that twenty, twenty-six.
ready for that twenty, yeah, ready for the tournaments.
I think we have the money for three fields. We need money for the fourth field to be ready for that tournament in twenty twenty-six.
Right, which is three years from now, so anyway, uh, eh, two and a half. Let's, let's.
Two and a quarter.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So the thing with the, the infield and, and a hundred percent, right, how do, you'd have to buy a plaque, build a plaque or whatever, post on the gate. A hundred percent could be done. Um, I'm not opposed to that. What I'm opposed to that happened, and, and this is kind of on us as council, and how we, I feel that we allocated some money there is that, that money was spent as a match to a grant that we did receive, okay? And this is just me feeling this way, but we received enough money off of that grant that we did three fields, not the fourth, and we had infield mix for a General's Field that they mixed in there also. My feeling is, is we had enough there that they did all four fields with the match, is how I, I, I feel it could have been. We could have got all four fields done there with the infield mix and not been down one field there. That's how I feel with the match and how the funds went. It was not, the, the matching was, uh, ten thousand, three hundred and some dollars, right, that they used for the match. They didn't spend a hundred percent, is my understanding from the presentation, that was given on all the VFW fields. And I feel that council, when, when we, we did that, we should have probably said, if there's a match, a hundred percent needs to go to the VFW to complete a project, right? There, there's only.
Where did, um, I missed a mist. Where did the other part go?
To the General's, the other field.
Okay.
Where we allocated the match, the three, or ten thousand, three hundred to the VFW ball fields. So I, I'm sure a hundred percent of that ten thousand was spent there. It's just that some of the other funds received off that grant was spent at the other place, right, which we didn't say specifically, one hundred percent, you need to use this funds here. So that's, that's the only, the problem I have there, right? The other thing is, is this scoreboard has been messed up for a long time up there. I can remember, and I, I can tell you one hundred percent that I was on the board for American Legion, and we tried to repair that and replace bulbs and make it right, uh, and it still did not, it did not work, okay? So this has been something I've been asking for, for a long time, just myself personally. Uh, I probably didn't, before I sat on council, I didn't go about it the right way, knowing the processes and stuff, or it could have been done, allocated through probably like capital funding or something in the past, but I am stuck with, I think we need to do the scoreboard up there, and if it means matching funds, I think, uh, if, if there's a chance that that, that could be a matching fund, then we one hundred percent go that route. One hundred percent is used on scoreboards, right, which could be a scoreboard there if there's forty thousand or fifty thousand that ends up in it for matched. We could put another scoreboard up and do other things also if available. We are good at building things, not maintaining them a hundred percent. I believe if we get the right situation in there, uh, with the right scoreboard, it'll be less maintenance, um, last longer, and I believe we can actually complete a project, right, not just build some. Not just build something and not complete it a hundred percent, so, cuz that's the only scoreboard in that whole facility.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
So along with what Chris was saying, this is, we have until twenty twenty-six to do all of the things that we need to do. So completion of the VFW fields needs to occur by twenty twenty-six to be able to host the tournament. To be able to effectively use the General's Fields and those fields down there, we should have a scoreboard. So from a timing standpoint, it seems to me that finishing that project, which was started a long time ago, as opposed to this one, which they started last year, we still have till, until twenty twenty-six. So we can, we can actually kill all these birds with one stone and say, we're gonna allocate money for the scoreboards now. We're gonna, and match those funds as best we can. And then we're gonna take next year's money and send it to the VFW, let them finish that facility over there and just do it by time. Let's finish this project because they started it so long ago and it never got done. Get it done. All the new LEDs will keep the price of the running it down. It'll last way longer. Um, it's the electrical that's probably the problem more than anything else. Um, and see if we can't get paired up with more money from some of our larger, um, companies in the area. And just do it by time. That's it.
Any other discussion? Well, this is all food for thought and this is just a discussion item. Do you guys feel that we would be ready to vote on this by the next meeting?
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, we'll put it on the next agenda as an action item then. And, uh, we'll go that direction. All right, thank you. Uh, next thing on the agenda is new business approval of minutes. Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion?
Lynn, was I there? Hold on one second.
I think I was gone.
I think you were gone. That's why they're down here.
Oh, sorry.
You were not present.
I was not present. Okay, that's why.
Did you see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I was just gonna check.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five yeas and one abstain. The one abstain with Councilmember Wells.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve another set of minutes for October third. Um, Councilmember Wells?
I move to approve the October third, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the October third, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five yeas and one abstain. The one abstain is Councilmember Seale.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is an executive session and, uh, Councilperson Wells?
I move to go into executive session at eight oh nine P M. For Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee or to hear complaints or charges brought against the employee, professional person or officer unless the employee, professional person or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in the executive session on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is part, party or propose litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at eight oh nine P M. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you.
These are cool. I got about a hundred of them. I got a bunch in the army all the time.
Oh, I was like, you only got one. They just started.
No, I got a hundred of them. Not this one.
Not that one.
No, that's funny. In the army, they have bands and you. Just one.
Well, that one, if you want. And you didn't have that with them. You went by.
When I said, where do you even go?
No papers?
Yeah, I already cleaned up, but I figured a bit of.
Hold it down over here.
And you're going down? Yes, and I will be there as soon as I can grab a.
Do you need help here, yeah?
I need.
Awesome.
Thank you. Michelle will just notice that. Michelle.
Oh, oh, oh.
Hey Bruce, how are you?
Good, yes.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Your work's alright?
Yeah, I got a better moment this morning.
Well, cool. Yeah, I mean, that, I kinda fell out there. So how you been?
Good, you got more to take?
Yeah, just. I'm gonna say something to him. How are you doing, Tom?
Good, how are you?
It was a nice meeting the other night. I heard that, that party was nice the other day.
It was good, it was.
You come and have a good time?
Enjoyed it, yeah, she enjoyed it.
Cool.
It was good. It was fun to be around everyone.
That was just a little life?
So, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
So Terry, I was trying, I was thinking, I bet he's gonna be just laid out here soon and making all those things, so.
I know, my wife's been asking me to talk to the mayor. I'm like, yeah, he's working on it.
I said, I would have given it to her, then you would have a pattern made me one.
You had a pattern, that's right, you had a pattern.
Did you guys go to slip on the next meeting today?
Uh, November second.
Oh, second, okay, so you got seventh on here, so I can't find anything without you.
I'm this last one, the seventh.
The seventh of November, when do you want to slip me in, huh?
The second.
Second of November, on the first day?
Yes.
Okay, I had it for the seventh, okay, good. I thought, how you do that and come back to the, um, council meeting two that night, right? Guys, I'll put that in here. Is there any updates yet? You told me I'm on it.
I think the council meeting is at the fifth.
Seventh, I think. Whatever, we'll see.
Let's look here.
And I think it's Tuesday the seventh, it looks like, yeah.
Is that the seventh, Tuesday? Yeah, cuz I'm sure it's the second.
Okay, good, I'm gonna change it in because, um, Thomas, you gotta go Arizona, man, it's really, really cold.
Yeah.
You guys gotta meet or something on the twenty-fifth or something too, I believe. Energy guy?
Yep.
Or that is something.
You gotta tell them we're talking about, um, uh, you tell them we're meeting.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Wanted to talk to the mayor and me, so.
Okay, cool, so.
Yep, so we'll get that one.
Cool.
Get that, yeah, there's always a meeting.
Oh, I know, we always, well, we have, I don't, I don't wanna go, so too, like, we're camp, we got a tent in the box, we haven't used it yet. Put a chair out there so that it's, yeah, it's okay to.
Going to Arizona?
Yeah, and we haven't been there yet, and I'm hoping to go before it's too cold to stay outside. I think it's still gonna be, like, in November's seventh, which I look, it's gonna be like windy at night, so.
Still warm down there.
I think that'll be fine, so, but.
Yeah.
So I wanted to go and see what's going on. I've been there for a couple of years, I'm curious what's going on.
Frustrating that you have these cool places. I've got a cabin that I've been to.
Oh, really? Where's that at?
Two years, it's about a weetland up on the river.
Oh, by Fort Laramie? I mean, by Laramie Peak?
Yep, it's up in the Laramie Peak range, but we're actually on the river. Up there, we have about three quarters of a mile of river. Old cabin, probably late eighteen hundreds cabin.
Oh, man.
Up there, we're kinda the last ones up the river.
Well, that's cool. We all by ourselves, huh?
And then there's, there's an old bay basically from us to the Weetland Three Reservoir. They're up in Shurum Basin. Kind of the last ones up there, but.
Just getting there sometimes, right? This thing's starting to fall in place. It's, you, you're taking over, uh, mom. And I'm sorry you had to do that, but I'm so glad you did. It's gonna take a little by little, I think.
It's just a much free time.
You're tired. You did that night, it's actually a party, you said you'd be working that day, you get.
I got a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully nobody's bugging you, I bet.
My problem now is, uh, for my CPA license, I have to get forty hours of education by November first. And I, I've been trying and my weekends have been taken.
Are you about done with the stuff here? There's some teeth from that?
So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm getting closer to getting the audit.
Well, you have to, I know, oh, so that's what's holding up?
Yeah, it's the audit.
Well, if you're doing two jobs still, are you too?
Yeah, so we'll lock that out. We haven't seen anyone.
Dang it.
Even the bad applications, I don't.
Really? Well, just, some people just don't want to work, right? I think you're gonna be kind of wrong now, the first thing you go, I guess, but.
Yeah.
I'm sorry for that, but.
We're working on it.
I think you're doing fine, I mean, other than those.
We're holding up. Yeah, I think we're, we're keeping up as best we can.
As soon as that's over, then you go do your thing. And if you have to, you're just gonna have to, I don't know. I, I, I can't help it, I've, I've been approved to do help with Lynn, but you know, I don't know if you're here then. Terry first became mayor, I volunteered, that, that was one of the things, I volunteered to help her because she was so much to do. So, and, and I told him, I said, what's this about the, um, personnel thing, I said? Cuz when I tried to help her, I took my credit and I, and I got back a credit report. He says, why would you need my credit for volunteering in her office? I was, um, dreaming, upstairs, yeah. And, uh, and I waited for like three weeks, I'm thinking, how long does it take for a check to get a background check? I haven't ever done anything. I mean, it's been forty years I've done anything, so.
We're gonna fix that, it's.
Cause I thought, that's crazy, and then why would they check my credit? I don't know. So I, I, that was kinda weird, been afterthought, you know, so.
Might stick if everything's.
Okay, fine. So, what have you been doing? Just this, we never did, we got the regular range, we wanted to come out there, but we never did, so, just told them for another couple of weeks, right?
I think so, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I saw him go to Arizona too, so.
I know you do, yeah, so.
I told her, I said, well, worst case scenario, I guess we'll just go there and stay in Old Town through the tent, it gets too cold.
Right, so he'll just let me know when you guys wanna go and if he's not in the meeting, then I will let him know, but, you know.
I started like in March trying to decide, and, but it's the way of the world, I guess, so, when we're here, so.
You?
Yes, so.
Okay, well, how's Jim doing? What's great?
Yeah, thank you, it's my watch.
It's my watch. I, I can see, but no, not because of my partner, see, Google, what time is it? Tell me too, so.
Okay.
Are you seeing the duck yet?
I wanted to see.
Google, so who do you think has to go check it out? Ooh, I gotta go paint, it was like I told him, that's like, oh, yeah. I have to go paint for real still, and, uh, it's like, I don't know if that's gonna happen this year or not.
Yes, it should happen.
For the weather, but it's gonna be a couple of days in there, I think they, they can do something with it.
Yeah. Yes, it's great.
Again, there's only here, that's what we have. Oh, we have something on the park, yeah, so nothing had to come today.
Just about week, we didn't have a lot for the agenda.
What time is it?
It is.
Twenty after eight.
Wow.
Yeah, writers, okay.
I bet you don't need something done, then, so it's.
Writers.
Okay. You can tell I said that.
I will, they'll watch it.
I'll bet it's probably true. Maybe by all, it's that far, but it'd be like, I don't know, zoom a pocket or kind of. Some chargeable batteries for those, they're in there, beach. I haven't worn this for a while, but it went in my hand, it's pink shirt, so. I thought it was gonna be cold, it's actually pretty nice.
Yeah, it is.
You're not walking, are you?
No, I wa, no, no, my husband's not crazy, we won't be a lot.
Is he gonna get you then, or are you just?
No.
Yeah, you should walk at night, probably, but.
No, I hadn't even been done somewhere, I bought the truck.
It's crazy out there, I guess, so, but see, bye. I wanted to come say that tonight cuz I just got it done, so we just got it done, so.
I think that's amazing.
I do too, right, it was, I mean, so, with all the people that, I mean, it was a lot, a lot of people that were just so happy that they could see it and it just made it worthwhile cuz it was so hard, we were about to, I thought, if I really did, I thought, oh my God, I'm making mistakes.
Said he's not, young man, he's.
I started almost a year, but two and a half years ago, so.
I know.
Yeah.
When I was young, you know, that song, that means something.
Yes, it does.
Bye, guys.
Yeah, we'll see ya.
It's ten minutes, nine.
No.
Mm.
Should we get home for about this late?
Probably. Yeah. I was hoping to be home all afternoon.
We don't get out here at night on a little headlight tonight.
You wouldn't do it late?
I said with her agenda, it's late. We can go home by now if you want.
No.
Which is fine. We got one of the deep silver baskets. Never had zot.
How do you know what it is?
Zots, the zots are not funny outside.
Are they hard or soft?
They're uh hard on the outside and on the inside it's business. When you get to the inside it's like.
Yeah. No, I can almost almost say I can. Okay.
Just about.
Last year. Yep.
Yep. Come in. We hear voices.
You apologize, I'm just gonna make you three minutes, five minutes before they get here.
Ten.
Man, if it's ten, I'm running down the hall.
Nine twenty-six.
You got, no, 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 I'm saying two, five, ten.
Oh God.
Before they get here. Oh God, 'cause I gotta go down the hall.
That was Bruce, I hear him.
That was...
Wow. He's coming.
Ding 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 ding.
I'm saying, wow.
He's coming, he's coming.
Wow.
Just remind me.
Hey, there's Bruce.
I could hear him.
You hear me rattling?
Yep, like the tin can.
Oh gosh. Oh man, I was wrong. Your clothes.
Smells good in here. What is that smell I'm smelling?
This is cinnamon gum.
Oh.
'Cause Tom's got an entire thing in the corner of his jaw.
Aw. You already had enough.
That's a good call.
I would've.
Councilman, I was murdered.
I move to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at nine twenty-seven P M.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session pursuant to you statute, what is it? Sixteen dash four, four oh five at nine twenty-eight P M. Any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with.
Uh, is there any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Seeing none, um, we'll go to the next thing on the agenda.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Yeah, that's all.
Ogeta.
Go for it.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of October third, twenty twenty-three, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
There been a motion made and seconded to prove the executive session minutes of October third, twenty twenty-three as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting, we have one more motion to make.
Online voting is open.
Uh, yeah, okay, nevermind, come back.
Voting has closed, a motion passes with five yeas and one abstain, the one abstain is council member C law.
All right, um, council member Wells.
I move to modify the current contract with Slow and Steady Law Firm.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to modify the contract with Slow and Steady Law Firm. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, please open up online voting or, okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I will adjourn this meeting and our ne- is there anything else to come before this body? At this time, I will adjourn this meeting and our next meeting will be November seventh, same time, same place. Thank you all.
Um, November seventh, what will the work session be?
I have no idea yet, they're still working on a couple different days.
Okay.